All right, folks, let's come back to order here for our next, I guess, two docketed items. We have a zoning map request and a development plan. And so with that, I'll call on Ms. Fox to read the next two docketed items, please.
Docket PG-16-036, application has been filed by Junior Foods Stores Incorporated for the approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 6.60 acres. The property is located at the 4700 block, address Highway 146 in Buckner. The change is from I-2 heavy industrial to C-2 community business and R-4 residential. Docket PG-16-037, application has been filed by Junior Foods Incorporated for the approval of a development plan on approximately 6.60 acres. The property is located at 4700 block of West Highway 146, Buckner. The proposed zoning is C-2 community business and R-4 residential.
All right. Thank you with that, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Veman to introduce the docket, please.
All right. That's your last docket. Brooke Veman, Planner with Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Fox stated, the applicant is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment on 6.60 acres. The proposed change is from I-2 heavy industrial to C-2 community business and R-4 residential. The applicant is also requesting approval of a development plan and program for signs. So this is located at the 4700 block of Highway 146. I think there was some confusion on the parcel number that was on the development plan. That was incorrect. I think it said 5-0, should be 4-0, and then on the staff report, I think it was mixed up, too. So it is 31-00-00-4-0. The existing zoning is I-2 heavy industrial. The proposed zoning is C-2 community business and R-4 residential. So this is an aerial view of the site. The entirety of the property currently, I think, is just over 11 acres. You can see that outline in blue. And it's located at the corner of Quality Place and Highway 146. This is the current zoning of the area. As you can see, it is currently zoned I-2 heavy industrial. It's bounded by C-4 commercial, which is the Highway Service District, and it's also bounded by I-2 heavy industrial. This is the future land use map. It does, I don't know if you can tell, it does, the orange color is considered industrial, and that's what we discussed earlier, is the future land use map, which is in your comprehensive plan, predicts what the uses will be going forward, and it does predict industrial.
I might be colorblind, but that looks brown or yellow.
I know. It looks a little bit different on the bigger screen than it does, but it, like I said, does predict that it will remain industrial.
Okay.
There's no site history, no previous planning commission cases that have been before you. We'll start with the zoning map amendment notes. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from I-2 industrial to C-2 community business on 2.01 acres to construct a crossroads IGA, which is a neighborhood convenience grocery store and fueling station containing a witchwich sandwich shop. They're also requesting a zoning change from I-2 industrial to R-4 on 4.59 acres to construct a 72-unit multifamily apartment complex. So that makes up the 6.60 acres that they're requesting a zoning map amendment on. So just to clarify, this front section here, they're requesting that 2.01 acres of that is changed from I-2 to C-2. This yellow portion, they're requesting 4.59 acres of that to be zoned to R-4. The remaining portion of this tract will, the remaining portion of this tract will remain I-2. It's just over five acres, and that will remain in ownership of the current owner, which is the Floyd Hartledge, and I believe he's here as well, if you have questions for him. If this application is approved, the applicant will submit a minor plat to create two lots separating each development and the remaining land retained by the current owner. So one lot will become three lots in total. We'll start with the proposal for the C-2 zoning district for the crossroads IGA. They're requesting approval of a development plan to include a 10,262 square foot convenience store and four pump fueling station on just over two acres. The parking calculated for the crossroads IGA was determined by the size of each use inside of the building. Just over 6,000 square feet for the grocery, which is about 60% of the building, requires 24 minimum of parking spaces. They're proposing just over 1,000 square foot of fast food, which is 10% of the building, which requires eight parking spaces. And then a 3,000 square foot convenience store, which is about 30% of the building in its entirety, requires 15 spaces at minimum. So they meet the minimum parking standard at 47 spaces, which includes two handicap This is the portion of the development plan highlighted in red that is requesting the C-2 zoning. You can see outlined in the gray is the 10,000 square foot convenience store, which includes the witchwich sandwich shop and a fueling area. You can see the hashed line here is the proposed fueling station with the four pumps. And then this is just a zoomed-in view, so you can get a better idea of what will be impervious surface and what will be remaining green space. The area that is outlined in the light gray is the existing parking, or the proposed parking area. And the dark gray is the 10,000 square foot building, and then you can see the fueling station is located to the south of the property. There also, I wanted to point out, there also is a pedestrian connection that is proposed between the crossroads IGA section, which will be zoned C-2, and the multifamily complex, which will be to the south. So these are the building elevations that were submitted. You can see the witchwich sandwich shop, where those might be located in the building.
Can you say that three times real fast?
Please don't ask me again. So we'll move on to the multifamily complex, which is proposed in R-4. The apartment complex will include approximately four buildings. So Building 1 is the larger building, which is 25,000 square feet. It'll be two stories and 28 feet tall. Building 2, 3, and 4 basically have the same footprint and the same elevations. Those are just over 19,000 square feet each, and again, they're two-story and 28 feet tall. There are also two garages proposed, just for the residents that will live at the apartment complex, and each of those are 1,740 square feet. They're one-story. So the total building area will be 85,940 square feet. The parking for the 72-unit apartment complex includes 109 surface spaces and 12 garage spaces, totaling 121 spaces, which meets our parking requirements for multifamily development. So this is the, outlined in yellow is the proposed R-4 tract, and you can see where the buildings are proposed. The larger building is located at the section that's abutting Quality Place. You could see the pedestrian connection that they're providing to the proposed crossroads And again, I wanted to show you the separation of the impervious surface from the remaining green space. You can see the parking areas are outlined in that light gray, along with that pedestrian connection. There are a couple open space areas that are required per our regulations, and there's one here and back here. And the size of those meets our open space requirements. These are the multifamily building elevations. So you can see Building 1, which was this building here, is the larger footprint, and that's this one right there. And then Building 2, which will be Building 2, 3, and 4, are all relatively the same footprint and the same elevation. And then at the top, you can see the proposed garage elevation. Regarding access, there are two access points along Quality Place and two access points on Highway 46 that are proposed on the development plan that was submitted. The development plan also shows a preliminary 50-foot right-of-way for a connector road between Quality Place and Fox Run Road, which has not yet been established. If this road is built, the second entrance on Quality Place will be closed, and the apartment entrance will be located to the connector road. So currently, these are the proposed access points. You can see one off of Quality Place and one off of 146 for the proposed crossroads IGA, and then one off of Quality Place for the apartment complex, and one off of 146 for the apartment complex, to separate both of those uses. If that connector road is ever established and is built, this entrance will be closed and relocated to the entrance of that, off of the entrance of that connector road. Where that is, I'm not sure, but it'll be somewhere off of that connector road. Paula Wall is not able to make it today, so I know you guys do have the traffic impact study and her comments from when she reviewed that, but I just wanted to go over what the traffic impact study conclusion stated, which was, based upon the volume of traffic generated by the development and the amount of traffic forecasted for the year 2018, there will be a minimal impact to the existing roadway network, and the existing center turn lane should be restriped to provide it to a left turn lane between the entrance and the access to Old LaGrange Road, and that's along 146. KYTC also commented, as you know, Highway 146 is a state road, so they determine whether access points ingress and egress will be allowed or permitted. And they did state that the access points shown on the plan submitted are approved for location only, and they will reserve the right to make further comments until the plan comes in for construction review. And that's pretty standard for KYTC. So the development plan meets all other zoning regulations, such as setbacks, parking, lot coverage, impervious surface, and floor area ratio, and that's both for the multifamily development and the crossroads IGA. And so now we'll move on to program for signs. The applicant is requesting approval of a program for signs for the proposed crossroads IGA, to include one freestanding sign, four wall signs, and four directional signs, which don't need review or permits. Those are allowed as of right, as long as they're under six square feet. But I did just want to let you know that they are going to have directional signs, which will help with the movement around the site. As you may know, we do have a section that talks about when program for signs are allowed and the purpose of those, and that's when owners of one or more adjacent premises or one or more occupants of a shopping center or multi-use building may submit a program for signs to the commission that need not comply with some or all of the requirements of this ordinance. The program for signs shall contain a visual representation of the lettering, illumination, color, size, height, placement, and location of the signs proposed for display. So there is a proposed freestanding sign, which will be 111 square feet, and it is 35 feet tall, will be located 20 feet from the property line at the right corner, which is the southeast corner of the property, which will be visible from Highway 146. So this is the proposed location of the freestanding sign. You can see it's on the other corner here. There is an existing sign for Quality Place, which is located in this corner, and I spoke with the applicant, and they're not going to remove that, so that will remain. You can see it's 35 feet tall, does have a little bit of illumination, so it can be seen at night. We do have requirements that it's not bright to where it shines in the light of the eyes of the drivers. And then as for wall signs, there are two crossroads IGA wall signs that are proposed on the building, one on the grocery side and one on the fuel side. So the one on the grocery side is proposed at 35 square feet, and the one on the fuel side is proposed at 77.5 square feet. There are also two witchwich sandwich shop signs located, which will also be, one is proposed at the fuel side, and one is proposed on the grocery side, and both of those will be 36.47 square feet. And here's the building elevations again, and it just shows you the location of those proposed signs. So I think the grocery side is this elevation, and then the fuel side is this elevation. So we'll go through the pictures. This is looking east at the intersection of Quality Place and Highway 146. The property is located to this, where this dash line is. This is looking south toward Crestwood. You can see the existing Quality Place sign at the corner. I know you're all very familiar with this site. You can see on the aerial view, I marked in red where I was standing, just so you could figure out where I was in relation to the whole site, as it is a very large site. So I was standing right across from the treehouse building on that corner, looking back towards Crestwood. This is looking north towards Buckner-Lagrange area, still at the corner of Quality Place and Highway 146. This is, and you can see again, I'm standing here at this corner on the property in question, looking back towards the treehouse property. This is looking west on Quality Place. And this is the existing building that is currently on this property that will be owner-retained. Again, just another view of the Floyd Hartledge property. And again, just a east view, looking east on Quality Place, back towards 146, and the property in question is to the right. At this point, I'm standing at the railroad crossing off of Highway 146, so it's directly across the street. You can see it circled there. That's where I'm standing. And I'm looking into the property in question, which is the 4700 block of Highway 146. And just another view of the property from the crossing. So in summary, you've got three applications before you today. The first one is a zoning map amendment request, which will go to Oldham County Fiscal Court. You'll make that recommendation for a zoning change from I-2 to C-2 on 2.01 acres and I-2 to R-4 on 4.59 acres. They're also requesting approval of a development plan, which will include a 10,262 square foot convenience store and four pump fueling station on just over two acres, as well as a 72-unit apartment complex on 4.59 acres. And last, you are also, there's also a request for a program for signs for a proposed crossroads IGA at the 4700 block of Highway 146, to include one freestanding sign and four wall signs. So you would be approving a 111.84 square foot freestanding sign, that's 35 feet tall and 20 feet from Highway 146, the property line, and also 185.44 square feet of wall Clears mud?
All right. Thank you very much. With that, commissioners, questions? It's Mr. Horton and then Ms. Albertson.
Now, I'll ask you the one I asked you before. On your 25 items that you mentioned, have the applicants either satisfied your questions or provided you with the information that you wrote and all that to your satisfaction?
Yes, yes.
Okay. How far north, and I didn't see it on the map here, do you have a map showing how far north the industrial zoning goes from the applicant's property north on 146?
I believe it's just past Cedar Point Road. Yeah, it's that corner property, and that's the last one, the corner property on Cedar Point Road. I can pull it up on our mapping.
So it goes, let's see, what, past Quality Place?
Yes, it is past Quality Place.
Cedar Point Road comes out right just before the curve.
In the bend, yeah.
And that's where the warehouse is, so that's where the industrial zoning is.
Okay, so that's industrial all the way down.
It ends right here.
Okay, down to there. Okay, and in the future land use planning, the comp plan, was part of that done to eliminate spot zoning, the comprehensive plan and the future land use? I mean, was that part of the design of the future land use, if you know, or if we recall?
I wasn't here when that was adopted, so I'm not sure what your method was, but Jim probably...
Well, typically, a future land use map is factual and conceptual in nature. Factual will be what's the existing zoning, and then what would the prediction be, if you will, for that zoning to either change or remain the same, based on factors. Factors being infrastructure improvements, market demand, things like that. So as we went through the future land use map, and if you remember, we went through the study review committee and ultimately Planning Commission with that as well, we looked at potential conditions. In this particular case, land that's zoned industrial is fairly limited in Oldham County. We had no potential user, so future land use said, leave it what it is. One of the things that we continually point out is, years ago, there was a thing called tiered zoning. If you had industrial zoned property, it would say that you can do everything in industrial, C-4, C-3, C-2, C-1. It may have said R, but again, that went away, so now it's strictly industrial, and that's why they're seeking a zoning map amendment. As you know, we can't do residential in industrially zoned property without either a waiver or a change in zoning, so the residential portion of this would have come for a zoning map amendment anyway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Albertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brooke, on page three of the notes of our packet, number six, it talks about the apartment complex. The building, two-story, is 28 feet tall. Garage, one-story, is 28 feet tall. Is that just a typo, or is the garage really a tall garage with lots of storage up above?
It does say that, Brooke, and if you don't mind, ask the applicant that question. They'll be able to clarify, because they have all of their design professionals here, but that is a typo, I'm sure.
I apologize, yeah, it's definitely not 28 feet tall.
Okay. I thought, how great, you know.
Two-story garage.
Parking garage.
I think it's 16 feet.
16?
Yeah, 16 feet, that's what the development plan says.
All right, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Hey, Mr. Clingefus, could I see your hand?
Yes, on the traffic study, I was wondering why Fox Run wasn't included. We had some concern, I think, earlier this year.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Fox Run Road, why wasn't that included in the traffic study?
Well, it's not located...
The volume on Kentucky 146 is what is studied and the impacts and where it's coming from. You could go down one more intersection, and why didn't we study the ramp coming off I-71? So really, you look at the main line, traffic, existing conditions, and make predictions on, you know, natural growth.
Yeah, just to where they, well, it appeared from previously, they did have some problems, so.
Yeah, and you see on here that we're proposing, the applicant has got a potential future right-of-way dedication of 50 feet. We've been talking about trying to come from Fox Run to Quality Place without going on 146.
Okay.
And so we don't know that that's necessarily going to happen, but this development plan is at least predicting that. And if we get through looking and planning with all the property owners in that corridor, and then find the money to be able to do it, we'll build that road, and that'll alleviate some of the Fox Run traffic issues.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Albertson, I think I saw your hand back up.
Yes, I had another question I forgot about. I didn't see a letter from the schools about the impact.
I'd like to call on Michael. We'll ask him to come up. He's here.
Yes, okay, I understand he's here, but I didn't...
Mr. Williams, would you come on up, please? We'll get him sworn in, and then...
Yeah, we usually have a letter, but...
Williams, we'll get you sworn in first.
Do you sound like you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Name and address for the record.
Michael Williams, Director of Pupil Personnel, Oldham County Board of Education, 6165 West Highway 146, Crestwood, Kentucky. Ms. Albertson, that letter is coming. It's just not come out of our legal department's office yet, and with only potentially 24 two-bedroom apartments, that impact for us is less than 12 students, K-12, so, but it is coming to Mr. Urban. It just hasn't been produced at this point, and it has to be reapproved by our board. We had a short turnaround, from the time I got it to get it to Ann, our board attorney, and to get it approved by the board, we had less than a week turnaround to get it ready for the board meeting, because they pushed our board meeting up to last Monday, since we're already out of school. So it will be here, and it's coming, but like I said, the impact is potentially less than 12 students for us.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for staff? I'm sorry, Mr. Douglas?
Just a couple questions. Is this, let me just see if I'm clarifying myself right. This is a motion for us to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment, correct?
Correct.
Not us approving it, because that's what it states here.
You'll approve or deny the development plan and the program for signs, but you would recommend approval or denial to fiscal court, who has the ultimate decision.
I just wanted to make sure, because that doesn't say that on our paperwork. And then the second is, do you know who approved the, and this is a very narrative, and I always ask the applicant that. This is rezoning submission drawing. Doesn't really appear to be like a huge developmental plan, plan that we normally get. Did someone from the staff review the stormwater, detention basins, and things like that before it was submitted to us?
We had a consulting county engineer who reviewed, yes.
It did go through the technical review committee.
Okay. Okay, any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant, representative, and others in support of the application. Mr. Barden Whopper, I assume you're presenting, and whoever you would like to speak to the commission, if we get them all sworn in at one time? Okay, we'll get Ms. Fox to swear them in.
Do you sound like you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to tell the truth?
All righty, and we'll get their name and address when they come up to testify, so, welcome, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Looks like it's a good afternoon now, and I apologize, my voice is a little funny. I've got a cold, so I'll limit my talking and let these gentlemen kind of walk you through it, but we did have a really thorough presentation by Brooke there, so apologies from us if a little bit of this sounds, or a lot of it, sounds redundant. But we'll perhaps be able to go more quickly through it. I know you've got to let fiscal court in here by 2:00 or something, so our part will be finished long before then. In any event, I'm Bill Barden Whopper, and my partner John Talbot's here. John's kind of following me around some, because when I have a cold like this, I'd like somebody else to step in, but he hasn't been yet prepared for that. He has been a real estate attorney for years and just started doing some more of the land use, like I do. Tim Rich is with Houchens Industry, and Andrew Webb is as well. I call it Houchens. You guys have, I think, seen in the application another name for it. Houchens is the largest employee-owned company in the entire United States, and they're based in Bowling Green. They have a variety of divisions. I guess you still own Clear Lions, is that right? Which, you all are familiar with that. They also own 500 grocery stores, and this particular brand that you're hearing about today, the crossroads IGA, is one of their newer concepts. And so we've been fortunate to be able to represent them on, one of those built on Shelbyville Road, two approved recently, Builton Road and Smyrna Parkway, then there's one under construction in Oldham County that had the zoning already, right outside of Prospect. So this, I think Tim's got several dozen more in the hopper in various locations, but this is one of the, still the earliest. I've been calling this a modern-day version of a neighborhood grocery store, because it isn't a convenience store like you typically see with a gas station. It is a full-service grocery, and you'll hear about that from Andrew Webb in a second on behalf of Houchens. behalf of Houchens. They're not as small as a convenience store, they have some of the convenience activities in there. They're not as large as your normal full service, but as you'll hear from him, it is a full-service grocery. So that's what, that's who Tim and Andrew represent. And then Jody Allen is here with his building company and Jody, I'm going to get him up here in a minute to talk about J. Allen Builders who the Houchens folks know from Bowling Green and they're bringing him in here to build the apartments because Mr. Hartlidge had extra land that he wanted to sell and so they needed to put something else on the balance of it, so they were looking for a use that was compatible with them and one that we'll explain at the very end why we think it also works within the context of your comprehensive plan, bringing housing in close proximity to jobs. And then Brian Shirley is with Arnold Consulting, that's Brian there, and Brian's the one who drew the plan, they're a land planning and engineering firm, so he'll get up here and talk a little bit about the plan. And then Rob Bastrum is with CDM Smith Traffic Engineers and you've seen Diane over the years with that company and previous to that with other companies and then once as your own consultant, but she's got the better end of the stick here than all of us, she got on a cruise, so we got to be in this cold weather and Rob has this job today. But he's familiar with the traffic analysis and can address that briefly and then answer some questions that you may have about it. So again, it is for this 10,500 square foot neighborhood grocery and with a quick casual or fast food component within it with the gas pumps at this location. You've seen an aerial view already, you get some idea here from our aerials of the location. It obviously will serve traffic off of I-71, but also particularly people going along 146, you know, from the interstate and back and forth into La Grange or I'm sure that'll generate a significant amount of business from the industry located in the immediate vicinity. And then because you can see the site is larger than we need, all Tim and Andrew need is the very corner, we're able to fit very nicely without any waivers or variances or anything, these apartments into the balance of the site. So what I'd like to do is just get Andrew, I'm going to do it this way, Andrew will real quickly explain a little bit so you get a better idea of what the Crossroads IGA is, and then I'll ask Jody to come up and he'll give you a little better idea of the apartments and the building materials and so forth, which are always important to you all. And then we'll get into the site plan and the land planning. And so, I'm going to, since you've seen already views of the site, I'm going to just rush through these and we can come back to these location photographs if necessary. And then Andrew, I don't have any photographs of the inside of the store, but I'll just go here for a second, you can talk about the nature of the IGA.
Could get your name and address, please, for the record.
Andrew Webb, 700 Church Street, Bowling Green, Kentucky, 42102.
Okay.
Briefly, we'll go through the store components, she's already covered quite a bit of it, but it is a, and Bill explained it well, you're more of an olden day neighborhood grocery corner market where you can get your fuel, you can get your convenience items, but it does have a grocery store that if you chose to shop it as your only place to shop, you could, you would be limited on some of your selection, but you've got everything you need from milk, meat, bread, you can stop there on the afternoon going home, stop at the restaurant, pick up something that night. We have a deli that will be in the back, not a sandwich deli, but makes rotisserie chickens and things like that to set out and sell as well. That's the main components of the grocery store itself, which it has its own beverage bar, you've got your coffee, you've got your ice cream machines and that normal component. But the thing that we're known for is, is that it's a one-stop shop on your way home. When you come in, you can stop and get something for that night, you can buy the stuff to get for the rest of the week if you need it, fuel, whatever you need, we like to make it to where on your way home from work, swing in, fill up, get what you need for the house. And that, this is a store that we've been putting in quite a few here recently and got several more coming. And Bill even said, if you want to look at one going that's under construction right now, one on Oldham County side of Prospect is going up and I'm overseeing the building of that. But if you have any questions on the store component, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
I want to just ask you one thing, Andrew. I think pricing is an issue that kind of is worth noting. I think you've said something before that it's not convenience stores, but what are the pricing?
Correct, this is a grocery store price. It is supplied from our warehouse in Bowling Green with our, with the same products, same prices what you'll see in our grocery stores.
That way, when you buy two gallons of milk instead of one, your spouse will, my wife will tell me, she'll say, "Why did you buy two gallons of milk?" I said, "One," and I said, "Well, I thought two were better than one." She said, "Yeah, but the price at the convenience store is twice what it is at the grocery." So Andrew said that these are grocery store prices and it's worth knowing. That is another reason that it's legitimate when they say this is a corner grocery. So that's worth knowing about what they're doing there. This is the design, they're attractive, they have a porch kind of over the front of the building, which is different also than a lot of the other convenience-style groceries that you see. I'm going to ask Jody to come on up and talk for a minute about what it is that you're proposing in terms of these apartment buildings and tell them about the building materials and your experience as well. Sure.
One thing, name and address, if you would. Name and address, if you would, for the record.
Jody Allen, 4520 Louisville Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky, 42101.
We've already sworn in, so go ahead.
What we are proposing are 48 one-bedroom units and 24 two-bedroom units in the buildings that you've seen on the drawing. The building materials are, they're either, it's a brick or stone veneer that encompasses the entire bottom of the building up to the window ledge and then the balance of that is hardy board, the cement siding product. So we don't use any vinyl or any other components in the exterior products of those, those are 100% brick or cement fiber board. They're, these are typical of some other projects that we've done and over the years have kind of fine-tuned and listened to, got a lot of resident feedbacks over the things they like or didn't like in some other units and we've kind of continually upgraded these products. This particular building has nine-foot ceilings, crown molding. We use a lot of product called an LVT, which is a luxury vinyl tile. It looks like hardwood, but we don't have the maintenance issues a lot of times that we have with hardwood or laminate type product. We've found this to be very durable and yet sustainable over the long term. We are the builders and the owners and the managers of the project, so that's kind of what I do for a living. We build, we develop them, we build them, we keep them and we own the rental company that manages them. So from start to finish, we control everything and we think at the end, when we manage them ourselves, we understand who the residents are, we understand the conditions of the property and I've been involved in some other situations where I had some properties that were managed by an outside source and the keeping them full is their main priority for the most part. And sometimes some of the maintenance, especially preventive maintenance type products get, don't get quite done the way they do, but those are, that's, those are high priorities on our list. If you're going to own it, you want to maintain it and for a long time, so. Be glad to answer any questions that anybody may have about the type of product that we use or the management of them or anything else.
And you've done some other projects in Bowling Green before, this isn't your first one?
Yes, sir, no, we currently have a little over 300 units that we own and manage and a little over 200 units, not counting this project, under construction now, so that's what we do full-time.
Okay, good.
Sir?
And I always, I think that's worth knowing, a little bit about who it is and so forth. In this day and age, there's a lot of flipping going on in apartment construction just because the REITs, you know, are looking for inventory for their portfolios and, but these smaller guys, and I had a guy, a gentleman the other night from Bowling Green as well, who's doing exactly the same thing Jody is, smaller projects, owns them, manages them, and when you're looking for, you know, long-term quality, best things to look at are building materials, you know, and quality of construction. If they start cheap, they sort of end up cheap, but when you're using the kind of quality materials that you've heard from him here, then you know that you have good management and an owner-manager, that also helps to assure that you have, you know, long-term viability of the project, so I think it's worth considering. Now, yes, go ahead.
If I could add?
Oh, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
I'm Tim Rich with Houchens Industries, 700 Church Street, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Excuse me?
My role is, I'm the director of property and store development, my role's the real estate, new construction, a few other things for the company. And when we hooked up with Mr. Hartlidge for this large tract of land, we had to find, what can we do with the excess, because we only needed the two acres. And I just want to point out that we're very familiar with Mr. Allen's company, his quality of building and the quality operation that he runs, because they're in Bowling Green as same as we are. So we're going to invest over $3 million for our building and I invited him also to this partnership, knowing that he would have a quality product. I just want you to understand that me as a neighbor to him, I didn't want to invite someone who's going to have junk next door or have a poor-run business next door. So we put that consideration that we would have a quality partner next door as well. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Let's get to the site plan here, I'm going to skip, let's see, where was it here? Come on up, Brian. Let's put it on this one. Brian Shirley, I'm going to let him introduce himself and talk you through the plan, the points of access, the approvals that they've gotten from KTC for those access points, access to Quality Place and so forth. Go ahead.
Brian Shirley, 1136 South Park Drive, landscape architect with Arnold Consulting Engineering Services. Our firm has been doing a lot of the work for the Houchens projects and specifically this type of product that they have. I never get told I don't talk loud enough, I'm sorry, Jim.
Fan blowing.
Okay. You can see the site plan and I think when the staff gave the presentation, they went over everything very well. Each particular component of this, the grocery component will have two access points, one on the Highway 46, one on Quality Place. The apartment complex will have also access on 146 and onto Quality Place. And then in the event that the future road is ever constructed, the apartment would close that one access on Quality Place and add one in further down on this yet-to-be-named future connector road. With this site layout, I think you all can see a digital version at your desk. We have two different shades of green, just so you can really distinguish one project from the other. You can see how much green space there is on this project. The stormwater, we had some discussions about that earlier, we have multiple basins on this property in multiple locations because this site is relatively flat. It's not like some of the properties we develop where it's very defined direction going one way or the other, so we've had to spread out the stormwater into various locations and I think that adds a lot of benefit to a site, that you don't have large, for lack of a better term, engineered holes in the ground. They're going to be more gentle swale-type products that are more integrated into the landscape instead of superimposed onto the landscape. I think we've already kind of talked about the Crossroads Market and what they do and then the apartments. One thing that hasn't been discussed very much is the garage spaces within the apartments. It's a product that they've been doing in some of their newer developments, that you actually have the option to have a garage space. And we're also providing connection, pedestrian connection and internal sidewalks from the apartments over to the Crossroads Market, so you won't have to drive or walk through the grass, you actually have a pedestrian connection there. Site lighting is all going to be directed downward and inward for both projects. We usually use LED-type lighting now and it's a very efficient type of product, but we do direct everything downward and inward to the site, so we have near zero light spillage at any property line. I don't know if there's anything else I can...
Let me just, let me ask you one thing on the detention, you do have multiple detention basins.
Yes.
Are all of them outlining at the same place or are they going in different directions?
They're all going in different directions.
Okay.
So we're not going to be overloading any one place and we can't release the water at any kind of increased flow over what is flowing out today. So also with dispersing it in different locations, it just makes it much more efficient. And the type of basins we're using gives water more of a chance to infiltrate into the ground instead of running off.
And these are detention, not retention, correct? Right.
Correct.
All right, so we're limiting post-development rates runoff will not exceed pre-development conditions and, well, are there defined channels that they go into or is it just going to a surface runoff?
As they come out of the basins, we'll be going back more to a surface-type flow to where they were going, except along the Highway 146, there's an open ditch there.
There's, okay.
We will be putting water in that ditch, but at the pre-develop rate.
Okay, all right. If there are more questions on that, we can take those in a few minutes. Okay, let me go ahead and get Rob up here and get over to this chart in the traffic analysis. This traffic impact study was updated per comments and requests of KTC District 5 since the time of initial submittal, so the report that you see is updated as was requested. And I'll let you, Rob, maybe you want to focus on this chart here and you can walk through this thing.
Thanks, Bill. Rob Bastrum, CDM Smith, like I said, I am substituting for Diane and I've tried to get as fully up to speed as I could.
Get your address, if you would, please. Your address.
2525 Harrodsburg Road, Lexington, Kentucky, 40504.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. As Bill mentioned, this study has been updated already. The original one was done on November 15th and there was an update on December 6th due to the cabinet comments about 2028, so I don't know if you have the most recent one, but we can make that available to you later today. I want to talk about several things. First, the traffic. We have a 2016, 2018 and 2028. 2016 is just existing traffic and 2018 is when the development opens. And then we added 2028 because the cabinet wanted to see a tenure window, so, and those two future years are both existing and built. That's the analysis we did. As you all know, you've seen a lot of these, we do trip generation using the ITE Trip Generation Report. And that trip generation summed to about 166 AM trips, 198 PM trips, and 60% of the traffic goes north into Buckner and south, 40% towards the interstate. Interesting thing about that, 30% is from the apartments and 70% from the other two developments, so that's kind of the breakdown of these trips. I think there's four entrances, Bill, and the two on Quality Place, we assumed that all of the trips would be using the entrances on 146 just to be conservative and make sure that this is the worst case. We did a level of service analysis for all these scenarios, those three years on existing and build, and used the highway capacity software to develop letter grades for each of them. And as Bill mentioned, there's a very minimal impact. We felt like all the impact could be covered with having a full two-lane left turn lane throughout the project, so with some restriping. And Bill, I think that covers, is there anything else?
Let me just take you over to this, if you want to speak to it or if Brian does, but you want to just speak to the restriping along 146? Or did you have Brian do that?
Yeah, Brian can do that.
Okay, we'll get, I will just say, as Brian's coming up here on the traffic, of course, we always look at the peak ours, so when Rob said conservative, what that means is we try to look at the worst case, so we look at the peaks because they're the worst-case scenario. And we do show two access points of a Quality Place, but I'll get to that in a minute because it is a private road still. Worst-case scenario is we take it all to 146 and not to Quality Place. And again, we're just trying to see if the worst comes to pass, that all the traffic goes in and out on... goes in and out on, on 146, do we have any kind of problems there? And you can see from the analysis that was done, and these grades are based on delays at intersections. Everything from the no-build condition to the build condition, and no-build means if this wasn't done, and build means if this was done, both looking short-term into the future and long-term into the future, you see almost virtually in every case, I'm looking up there again, I think everything remains, pretty much everything remains the same except one grade goes from 8AB. Well, we're really and truly on a pass/fail system in these traffic analyses. We grade them on A, B, C, D, E, F. In the real urban circumstances, like in Louisville, we've got a lot of Fs, and sometimes we start with Fs and we end up with Fs, just because, you know, there isn't going to be any growth if, if we just stop, because we got Fs. In places like Buckner and a lot of your county, we oftentimes don't get out of Cs. Sometimes we see some Ds, occasionally we see some Es. But the truth of the matter is, all of these are, are, these are highly acceptable grades. And we only have one level of service, I guess, D at one intersection, looking way off in the future, isn't it? Can I see that correctly?
Yeah, that, that's the connection to Old LaGrange.
Okay.
Where you had, I think, existing, you had actually just one left turn in the morning and, and 3:00 in the afternoon for the southbound trips.
Okay. So, we do have enough pavement width out there to do, and Brian's going to just talk you through this real quickly about what's proposed there in terms of how to deal with turning movements. Right-ins, right-outs are never a problem, it's always the left-turning movement, so, Brian?
So the entire length of 146 in front of this project, currently, if you've been out there, I'm sure you have, you see dedicated left turn lanes in different directions. What the traffic study has suggested and the Transportation Cabinet has agreed, that we'll do a dual, two-way left turn. So it's not two lanes, but it's a opposing direction. And the traffic on this particular site, the majority of your left-hand movements are coming to the south. There's the connection to Old LaGrange Road, and I think the peak hour was for vehicle trips going that direction. So the Transportation Cabinet feels confident that just having the entire area as a two-directional left turn lane will satisfy the requirements for this project.
So that involves a restriping of it, rather than, as oftentimes, if we only have a two-lane road, then we have to add additional pavement for that center lane, but you've got plenty of...
Right. The right-way width is there, the roadway width is there.
And the pavement's there.
And pavement's there. It's just a striping exercise at this point.
Okay. All right, good. We'll get you back up here probably in a minute. Back to this issue of, whoops, Quality Place. So, we have proposed the two accesses on 146. They have been approved through our conversations with District 5 during the course of construction plans. Obviously, we need to submit those construction plans and an actual encroachment permit applications to the state. They make the final determination then, but preliminarily, they have signed off on that, and that's why we've shown them on the plan. It makes good sense to us to, from our standpoint, to have one access for the apartment and another access for the crossroads IGA. We do show these two access points on Quality Place because by all accounts, it's a, it's a, it's a road that serves an awful lot of businesses. When Mr. Hartlidge bought his property, his deed gave him access to his property. And, of course, now we're looking to subdivide this off from his larger property. So, we would have to get an agreement from the owner of that Quality Place to have those points of access. But from what I understand, they have written to Jim Urban, Jim sent me a copy yesterday of a letter from their council out of Chicago commenting on that, and it sounds like there's an interest in having that potentially future, potentially dedicated to public use as a county road. And, you know, we would share in that interest in doing that. Jim might be able to comment on what the county's interest might be in that. But I had written something up, a proposed condition of approval binding element, that I'll just read into the record for your consideration in that regard. And this is what it says. This would be a new binding element that I'll hand to Jim then, so that when you go into deliberations, you can either ask us questions about it or include it in a motion if you so choose. "But the applicant developer, its successors, and assigns shall be responsible for the following: A, investigation of and costs incident to the surface and subsurface conditions of Quality Place in contemplation of its possible dedication to public use as a county road by the owners thereof. B, surveying, plating, and recording and costs incident to dedication of Quality Place as a public road should Oldham County agree to accept dedication. And C, construction of improvements and costs incident to upgrade Quality Place to county public road standards along its property's frontage." So just to reiterate on that, or to summarize on that, our proposal is that initially, we will engage in further conversations with the owner of that road as to two things, either as to private access to a private road, or if, as we've seen from this communication from its council, that it would like to explore further the public dedication, then our client as developer and its successors and assigns would be responsible for assessing the condition of the entirety of, of Quality Place, because before, the county would presumably entertain the idea of accepting dedication. It wants to know whether, you know, what kind of condition the road's in. There are some areas of the road that look like it needs a little help today, and sometimes that's because the subsurface is a problem, not just needing a surface quote. And that's why I said in this proposed binding element that they would investigate the subsurface and the surface conditions. And then, obviously, if they're going to take it as a dedication, that would need to be surveyed and planted, and there's cost incident there too. And so Houchns would also agree to undertake that cost and responsibility. And then, at this point in time at least, their position is, to the extent that Quality Place does require some improvement, their commitment at this time is to be responsible for their frontage along there. Obviously, that road is heavily used by a lot of industry along there, so it would be our hope that some of the other industry would participate in the cost and expense of bringing that road up to standard. There is a maintenance agreement that exists relative to that road today, so presumably they all have been sharing in some manner in the, in the upkeep of that road. But my experience has been normally before these things are turned over, the county, the county's looking to have them brought up to standards, and then the, then the county would accept the responsibility going forward, but not going backward. So that's what we tried to set up, was a mechanism for that. So, the burden would be on our client to set everything up in an appropriate manner so that the, the county could consider accepting a dedication of a road that was up to standards. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, the last thing I'd like to do with just a couple of the remaining minutes, I know we have plenty, but when I filed this application, I did file what I call a detailed statement of compliance with your goals and objectives and land use element of your comprehensive plan. And one reason I do that is because then we have technically in the record a full statement of how we believe we comply with the comprehensive plan. And you have goals, and you have objectives, and you have a land use element. We did address the land use goals and objectives, the environmental goals and objectives, business and industry goals, objectives, transportation goals and objectives. And the land use, the future land use element is interesting. You do have this map that Brooke referred to, and this is shown as industrial. And you have in their future land use element, it's, it assigns various appropriateness levels and criteria in an attempt to guide your future land use decision-making as respects impacts of one development on another. And, and so, it's a question of whether a land use is, is appropriate. This particular ground was assigned a general appropriateness level, and that says that a commercial use like a, like a crossroads IGA is generally allowed without any other additional conditions of approval. I have recommended this one condition of approval because we show two points of access on a private road that the owner of that has spoken to, so I felt like I needed to address that with a proposed binding element. As to the apartments, I would say this about that, and that is, first of all, as your county attorney, planning commission counsel will tell you, comprehensive plans are guides, not straitjackets, you know? And so when you do have a map form of comprehensive plan, a lot of times people tend to think, well, the map is the map. Well, the map still remains a guide. And while the comprehensive, the land use element certainly appeared to contemplate the possibility of rezoning for a commercial use like the Houchns here, it didn't seem to contemplate apartments here. However, that doesn't mean that your goals and objectives don't address that, or such things as, you know, future population projections and so forth. And I would note that your comprehensive plan, you'll find the proper page here, but it does project by 2020, 7,500 population growth in Oldham County. And it does show the Buckner area as an area anticipating future industrial growth. When you look back at your transportation elements and some of your other elements, your transportation goals and objectives and some of your other goals and objectives, reducing vehicle miles traveled is in every comprehensive plan everywhere. I mean, that's important. And so, putting housing in close proximity to jobs, there really is nothing hardly any more important than that that we do, because that reduces the amount of wear and tear on your roads, it contributes to better air quality and so forth. So, while it might seem a little bit unusual to put apartments in an area that's currently zoned and projected as future industrial, there's actually good reason to do that. And we're doing that in an awful lot of places, and we have a lot of apartment builders who want to be in close proximity to jobs, because, believe it or not, people really prefer, a lot of people, particularly the kind of people that would, these apartments would appeal to. A lot of single workers and stuff in the, in the one-bedroom apartments would like to live in close proximity to their place of employment. So, we would suggest that looking at your comprehensive plan as a guide to future growth and development, it would be a good idea to put apartments at the edge of a business park such as this. And so we would submit that it does comply with the comprehensive plan. With that said, Mr. Chairman, we'll take whatever other questions you have. We've used up all the time we need for our initial comments.
Okay, so that completes your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, let me ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Okay, don't see anyone. Well, now, is there anyone here that would like to testify or have questions opposing the application? Okay, seeing none. Well, now, I'll open it up for questions from the commission. And before I start, I've got one question, Mr. Barden-Wooper. On the apartments, you said some of the units will be one-bedroom, I assume some will be, can you just kind of outline a little bit about, like, the cost to rent those, what, you know, those kind of issues? Are those kind of...
Sure. And I mentioned to Jody, you might be wondering about rents, and we can on that. You want to just, again, say the number ones and number twos? I don't think there's any threes, and then the...
Right now, the, the plan calls for 48 one-bedroom units and 24 two-bedroom units. Those are at or above current market rates is what our rent projections are. The average of those, between the ones and the twos, will be $850 to $900 would be the average monthly rent.
Okay. On the, on the singles?
Well, that's a combined.
Okay.
The ones are in the 7, 750 range, and the twos at 950 range is what our projections show.
Okay. Commissioners, questions of the applicant? Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barden-Wooper, this is about the potential of a connector road from the apartment complex to Fox Run Road. You may be aware that in recent history, the commission has turned down a plan for additional development at the intersection of Fox Run and 146. So, of course, I'm concerned about what implications additional traffic may have for that intersection and this potential connection. Can you speak to that, please?
I don't know if I can. I don't know whether, Rob, have you given any thought to that, or Brian?
I, I actually can.
Mr. Urban, I'd be pleased to hear your input as well.
I'm going to be testimony, though, so...
But you're asking me a question.
Yep. Yeah. We have been working, again, with the property owners, and, of course, all the citizens in Fox Run and all the traffic congestion, especially at the AM peak hours, but you'll see it in the evening peak hours as well, coming off the interstate, coming down 146, around the school campus, and especially left-turn movements coming out Fox Run Road, and trying to figure out what's the best scenario and how do we relieve some of those issues. And there are two things. Number one, apparently, the Transportation Cabinet has approved a traffic signal at Fox Run Road. That may or may not happen. Until we see it there, we don't know. But in my opinion, it creates some, some issues in terms of the amount of traffic that could build up at red lights, and then how do you make those turning movements, especially things, cars coming off the interstate? So the idea is that we started looking at connecting Fox Run Road and Quality Place by what we'll call a baggage road. Sometimes we call them frontal roads when they connect in the front, this was in the back. And I have been meeting with property owners, as well as Judge Vogel, with this concept of connecting those roads. It's not been finalized yet, but the idea would be that instead of people in Fox Run going out onto Kentucky 146, that they could take a left turn, go on this road, and come out to Quality Place, and that potentially, that's where we put the traffic signal. There would be more queuing space from Quality Place going in both directions.
Did I understand correctly that if that connector were established, that the connector would then no longer have a connection to Quality Place? Or that the apartment complex would no longer have a connection to Quality Place?
Well, no. What they proposed is that they take that entrance on Quality Place from the apartments and eliminate it, and then connect it somewhere in the parking lot area to that new connector road. So now, instead of coming out of the, having a connector road and an entrance and an entrance, you'd have a connector road and just the entrance to Houchns. That, the one for the apartments would go away.
So in other words, that configuration would channel ingress and egress through a signalized intersection?
Correct.
And so, again, this, this shows that really good where Fox Run is relative to our development in Quality Place. And so, I think the binding element that I offered you there is not just important for this development to be able to obviously utilize the two access points that we've shown on Quality Place. But our commitment under that binding element would also, I think, assist Mr. Urban and other planners in the desire that they've set forth and described to try to connect Fox Run to the Quality Place. Because if, if through the work that we do on behalf of this development, we're able to get Quality Place dedicated, then that future connection obviously becomes a feasibility, because it can't very well connect with a private road like that. Okay? And so I think that one, and then this image here shows, we don't show exactly how we would connect to that future connection, but I guess it would probably be somewhere down about halfway in that, in that pred...
Another slide that shows the full road.
Yeah, I don't know if I got it there or not.
I saw it earlier. Someone had it.
This one? In any event, maybe it was in the staff presentation.
Could've been.
Yeah.
Well, and I do want to say that I have been working with Mr. Rich from Houchns as engineers. I've been in contact with representative, real estate representative from Treehouse, which is, we remember it used to be Torbit and Castleman, then it was Rollcorp, then it was ConAgra, now it's Treehouse, that owns the manufacturing facility there. I've talked to our elected officials, I've talked to our road department about both of these items. One, the connector road, and also taking Quality Place into the county road network. So I appreciate the binding elements and an effort by Houchns and the development team to, to work with us to try to bring Quality Place up to county standards and actually take it in our county road... take it in our county road network. Most of you should know that we also have our county road department on Quality Place. So we're already putting the plow down as they exit and plowing, and back at the end of Quality Place is the YMCA, and there are other property owners that have access on Quality Place. So we're trying to work through that, and I appreciate the cooperation.
All I have, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas?
This might be for your engineer or Mr. Shirley. As far as the stormwater detention basins you have, there's a couple of questions I have that you might be able to answer. One is, is there going, where the fueling station is and the restaurant, is there any separation?
Mike Conser?
Yeah. Is there any separation for all-in-water separation for, I didn't see anything on the site plan for that. It just looks like to me water's running on that parking lot down to the detention basins.
Now, we're going to have to have some catch basins and then have the hydrocarbon filters or some other type of structure to filter the water before it gets to those basins.
Have those already been proposed, or? Well, will you be doing that to?
You would see those in construction plans.
We're required to do water quality by the state. Right. Now, this particular plan, we do not specify the exact product that would be used, but we do have to comply with federal or state rules as far as stormwater quality, and we have to capture those hydrocarbons before they go into a basin that could go into the groundwater.
We also have that on county standards, too, correct?
Yes. And then from the restaurant, there will be a grease trap that collects the greases before it gets into the central sewer as well.
Okay. And as far as the, you mentioned something about the ditch line on 146?
Yeah.
Will there be any improvement to that culvert on Quality Place and 146 by you guys, or is it going to stay the same?
We may have to give with the Transportation Cabinet and find out exactly where or who has control of that. But if it's needing improvements, then we would be required to do that.
Okay. And as far as the traffic, I guess this would be the traffic. We here at the Planning Commission understands that when you're talking about restriping and refiguring left and right turn lanes, on certain types of the day, you will see traffic backed up in the center lane, which are mostly semis. So I was wondering how that's going to work for the upcoming traffic that's making a right-hand turn or left-hand turn in the middle of those center lanes when it's going to be now?
Are you saying you're seeing it at this exact location?
Oh, yes. I mean, you'll see semis backed up to get to, I guess, Treehouse now it's called. I mean, it's backed up all the way to Morse Thornton Gas Station.
Oh, okay. Trying to make the left down to Quality Place?
Left into that, yes. You'll see.
Well, sometimes they're sitting there while they run in and get goods at one of these locations.
Exactly. And also, they're sitting there because of the.
They shouldn't be doing that.
So I just didn't know how that's going to work with that much traffic coming in off of 146, and your turning rate is at 36 feet. Is those fuel pumps set up to handle tractor-trailers going in there, too?
Come back up here so I can answer here. Just stay right here, because they might have some more. Let me go back there so you can kind of refer to that, whatever radiuses you have there.
This site is not set up for tractor-trailer fueling, so there won't be tractor-trailers fueling in here. They will be dropping fuel off, but as far as filling up their tanks, no, they don't, we're not a truck stop. It's pedestrian, there are cars and light pickup trucks.
I just want to make sure that, because impeding traffic, we don't want to see tractor-trailers parked in a center aisle, running into IGA. I mean, I'm concerned about the traffic flow, and also on Quality Place, that they decide to pull in there, and then having to turn around someplace in Quality Place.
Well, that's a, that is a good point, and so, just two things. One is the fueling, that's about, how often does that occur? Once a, what?
How often do you fuel?
About three times a week.
Three times a week? And it's over on the top of the image there, is it?
No, the fueling will be closer to the.
Do you point that out on the screen? You can touch the screen.
Yeah, you can touch it. Okay. This area here will be the location where the underground fuel tanks are, and then up in this area is the loading dock for the store. To invite tractor-trailer traffic through, I don't think Houchens has any desire to have tractor-trailers coming in and out of the site, other than what absolutely has to be there.
Only deliveries.
So your delivery, can you kind of draw the delivery route on there, how you'd expect that to be?
Yeah, you're coming in, and then the loading dock is back here for fuel. They can come down this direction, they'll drop their fuel, and then they can come back out and go whichever direction they need to.
But it, you know, it isn't designed in a way that would be conducive at all to the large trucks, and I hear what you're saying, there's a lot of business along there, but it's not conducive at all.
I mean, you're going into an industrial area.
Yeah, yeah.
So primarily, it's a large area for semi trucks, so you're catering to some of that business.
It was designed for the employees, not for the, for the truckers, so.
That all, and I do have, well, follow-up. For your, the loading ground or the back, where you unload up there, that tractor-trailer, then will he make that turn and come down this way and back out that way, or how will he, and he can make that, that radius is adequate for him to make that turn? Okay. All right.
One thing to add to this gentleman's comment about the truckers may stop in the middle of the highway on 146, and it sounds like they're doing it down at Fortins. If they stop here, I'm just, this is, I'm not a truck driver, but if you're telling me, I'll stop on 146 or I'll pull off the road there on Quality Place where there's less traffic, I'm probably just going to pull off the road on Quality Place. And that's not ideal, and I'm not endorsing that by no means, but it's at least safer than someone being out on 146.
All right. At that particular location, there's already a left turn lane. If they stop, they would be in a travel lane, not in a turning lane, so to speak, that, you know, with striped, solid stripes on both sides. I know that I've talked to Chief Smith of Oldham County Police Department about, and he, his officers are aware that if they see him parked out there, they move him along.
Any additional questions, commissioners? Okay, seen, seen none. Guess we're down to final statement. Mr. Barden-Warper?
I guess the final statement we just have would be to say that we haven't asked for any waivers or variances. I think the comprehensive plan clearly, the land use element clearly contemplates something like the Houchens grocery convenience and gas pumps here, and it would be obviously very helpful, used a lot by people who work in their business park. And I do think that the apartments are, add to the, just add to the total quality and mix of uses in all of Oldham County. And when you can put housing in close proximity, particularly workforce-type of housing in close proximity to workplaces, I mean, I don't know that there's any more important thing that you can do in the context of long-range planning, is to try to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Theoretically, people could walk to work. I know that we, a lot of people joke about that, because most of us, probably all of us, drive, but theoretically, somebody could actually reside here and take their bicycle or walk to a place of work. But in any event, they could go out the side, go into Quality Place, and go into their place of work. With the YMCA close by, they've got a place to recreate in addition to having a place to reside, and being right close to a grocery store, I mean, young workers and so forth, singles, there might be some couples who would choose to reside here, might do an awful lot of their grocery shopping here, too. So there's nothing but good that we concede, at least from our standpoint, and we ask that you consider this favorably with the condition of approval. If you have any others, we'd be happy to consider them. Thank you.
Complete your application in, sir?
It does, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. With that, docket PZ 16036, 037, and 038 has been completed, and I'll call on, we will, I would assume, Mr. Urban, consider the zoning map amendment request first?
Absolutely, yep.
And let's go over what's being requested there.
Okay. Well, you have seen that the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from I-2 industrial to C-2 commercial on 2.01 acres, and also R-4 residential on 4.59 acres. You have, as always, on page four, in your staff report, motion to either approve or deny. We always encourage you to make sure that you fill in the blanks when it, on these A, B, and C items. You can certainly consider the applicant's statement of compliance. Mr. Barden-Warper has gone over that. It is in your staff report. It's probably around page 11, 12, something like that. So there is at least language that you can rely on if you choose to use it and agree with it. And this is a recommendation to Oldham County Fiscal Court.
All right. You've heard the outline on the docket PZ 16036, which is a zoning map amendment request, as Mr. Urban's pointed out, which will go to the Fiscal Court for their consideration and final approval. So the chair would now entertain a motion on the zoning map amendment request. Yes, sir, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm making a motion to approve the zoning request. The comprehensive plan is a guideline. It's somewhat flexible, and the, we need to consider the generally accepting appropriate uses of the land. Note, there was no opposition here to the application. Also noting the potential for road, potential for the road between Quality and Fox Run and a potential signal light at 146. I think the applicant has actually met multiple objectives of the comprehensive plan. I only picked three here that were obvious to me, which is LU 1-1, having to do with community facilities. They're providing mixed land use, which is consistent with some other mixed land use north of this property on 146, which is not all that far from this site. LU 1-3, regarding compatible development, with the proposed development of the residential property near the industrial and commercial business, where housing for employees and so forth might be where there's none existing. And LU 3-3, having to do with commercial workplace development, I simply think the zoning change would be appropriate for this kind of development, and I would like to include on a motion all of the conditions of approval, as mentioned previously.
Those would be considered under the development plan, would they not?
Correct.
Yeah, we would need to consider those under the, this zoning map amendment request.
Yeah, this is just for the zoning map.
Yeah, we're drawing that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Yes, it's just a motion to recommend the zoning map amendment.
Okay.
Correct.
Correct. And this is a motion to, just to recommend?
Correct, to recommend to Fiscal Court for.
For the zoning map amendment, which would be from, on 6.6 acres, from, the change is from I-2 heavy industrial to C-2 community business district and R-4 residential.
Correct. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Mr. Falby seconds. Now, any discussion on the zoning map amendment request that will go to Fiscal Court for their consideration on docket PZ 16036? Any discussion? Seen none. I'll ask Ms. Fox to take the vote on the zoning map amendment request.
Yes.
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 If that was me, yes.
I don't think your mic's working. Doesn't sound like it.
Yes.
Mr. Klingerfoos?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right. The docket PZ 16036, which is the zoning map amendment request, which will go to Fiscal Court for their final consideration, is approved on a vote of 13 to 0. All right. Next docket we've got to consider is the development plan on docket PZ 16037. And Mr. Urban, I'll ask you to outline, maybe go over the exhibit A, that was presented.
Sure. The next consideration you have is to either approve or deny the development plan, as you've seen, for both the commercial and the residential development on this particular piece of property. You have in your staff report on page four, if you choose to approve it, some conditions of approval, and I'm going to read them and then add to, or actually, I'm going to modify number five. Number one is that there shall be no changes to the development plan presented on December 20th, 2016, without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The development plan must comply with all established county and state ordinances and requirements at the time of approval. What we've done is we've condensed all those and talked about fire hydrant ordinance, and we repeat them over and over. It's just, they've got to comply with all of the ordinances. Item number three is sight lighting shall be designed to not shine in the eyes of the drivers. Number four is a landscape plan must be submitted to the staff for review and approval. Number five is the one I'm going to modify, because they did actually submit a revised traffic analysis, as I understand. So I'm going to cut out the first part and start with, road improvements on Kentucky 146 must be submitted and approved to Oldham County and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet before construction plans can be approved. And that includes, but not limited to, restriping Kentucky 146 for left-turn lanes in both directions. And then I'm going to add the three that were submitted as exhibit A by the applicant. Number one is, well, this will be condition of approval, number six, investigation of and costs incident to the surface and subsurface conditions of Quality Place in contemplation of its possible dedication to public use as a county road by the owners thereof, owner or owners thereof. Number seven is surveying, plating, and recording and costs incident to dedication of Quality Place as a public road, should Oldham County agree to accept its dedication. And then number eight would be construction of improvements and costs incident to that construction to upgrade Quality Place to county public road standards along its property frontage, and that would just be the portion from Kentucky 146 along their frontage. So those were the binding element, I mean, the conditions of approval that I have as recommendations.
All right. Mr. Carter, anything else we need to consider?
No.
Okay. Mr. Barden-Warper, is that okay with you and your, the applicant's with, as far as the outline Mr. Urban has made on the conditions of approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, you've heard Mr. Urban outline the proposed conditions of approval on the request on the development plan. What's the pleasure of the commission? Need a motion on the development plan portion. Mr. King? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move for approval of the development plan as submitted, based on compliance with objectives of the comprehensive plan as set forth in applicant's submittal, and, of course, compliance with zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, incorporating the previously noted conditions of approval.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Okay, that's adequate? All right. You've heard the motion to approve on docket PZ 16037, the development plan with the attached conditions of approval. Do we have a second? Okay, yeah, we've got several seconds down here. I think Ms. Smith, I saw her hand go up. Any discussion on the, I'm sorry, Mr. Urban?
Well, Mr. Carter brought up a point, just for clarification of the commission's perspective, if for some reason Fiscal Court chose to overturn your zoning map amendment recommendation, then the development plan goes away because it wouldn't be in compliance, and that's just inherent in these kind of decisions.
Sure.
But Fiscal Court is really just going to make a decision on the zoning map amendment.
Yes, okay. And that's, that's normal of what we do.
Normally what we do, yes.
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Finney?
Question, the binding element where they will take care of the road that is their road frontage.
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Finney?
Uh, question, the binding element where they will, uh, take care of the road that, is their road frontage on, uh, Quality Place. My understanding is we, we will have two separate owners of property here, we'll have the, we have the IGA property and the, um, apartment property. Is that correct?
Mr. Urban?
Uh, I believe, uh, the, well, the applicant is JR Food Stores, Inc., uh, whoever that may be, uh, they're the ones who are committing to these, uh, conditions of approval.
So, does it-
It says successors and assigns.
And successors and assigns, yeah. I, you know, I didn't read, there was a little preamble I didn't read in these conditions of approval that Mr. Bardenwhopper had read in his testimony, and that is, applicant slash developer, comma, its successors and assigns shall be responsible for the following.
Okay. So, that's, that way, and both properties are included?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote? All right. Ms. Fox, if you would, this is a, a vote on docket PG-16037, the development plan with the attached conditions of approval. This is a motion to approve. Ms. Fox?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfoos?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Mr. Ar, Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Dr. Crosby?
Yes.
Ms. Falby?
Yes.
Mr. Falby?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The, um, motion to approve the development plan on docket PG-16037 has been approved on a vote of 13 to 0. All right. We have one additional docket that we need to consider, which is a approval on program for signs. So, Mr. Urban, would you outline that, please?
Sure. And this is PG-16-038, and then the applicant is requesting a program for signs. Uh, the signs are as follows, there's a freestanding sign of 111.84 square feet, it's 35 feet tall and set back 20 feet from, uh, from the property line. Uh, there's a crossroads IGA wall sign, the first one is 35 square feet. Uh, the crossroads IGA wall sign, the second one is 77.5 square feet. Here we go, Brooke, it's my turn. There's a which, which sandwich shop sign, uh, the first one, actually, there are two, um, of 36.47 square feet each. So, the total proposed freestanding signage is 111.84 square feet, and a total proposed wall signs is 185.44 square feet. Uh, there's a proposed motion in your packet for either approval or denial, and, uh, there are, uh, a couple of binding element, uh, conditions of approval, I still call them that, uh, for your consideration, that there'll be no changes in use or changes to the program for signs, uh, presented on this date without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. Uh, the second one is that sign lighting shall be designed to not shine in the eyes of the driver, and the third is that sign permit applications must be submitted to staff for review and approval.
All right. Mr. Carter, anything you need to add?
No.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner, you've heard, Commissioners, you've heard the, uh, outline on, uh, the docketed items, or a program for signs, uh, under section 290-140. Uh, so, what is the pleasure of the commission? Yes, sir. Mr. Falby?
I'll move to approve the program for signs.
Is your, uh, mic on, sir?
Excuse me. I'll move to approve, uh, the program for signs, uh, because the design in, uh, innovations of this case will achieve the basic, uh, objectives of the regulations, and they'll incorporate, uh, what Mr. Urban, uh, outlined before, and in the presentation, uh, for conditions of approval.
Okay. Mr. Carter? Adequate?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have a second? Okay. Multiple seconds? Okay. We'll say, uh, Mr. Mesker, I did it, uh, seconded it this time. So, uh, any discussion now on the motion to approve the program for sign request on docket PG-16038? Any discussion? All right. Ms. Fox, if you would, let's take the vote, and this is a motion to approve the program for signs.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falby?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfoos?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right. On docket PG-16038, which was a, uh, motion for a program for sign approval of, uh, under section 290-140, uh, it has been approved with the attached conditions of approval on a vote of 13 to 0. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we won't, we won't take a recess here, we won't take, shouldn't take too much longer to finish up. We have two, uh, other business items we need to consider, and then we'll be done.
He is too. He's waited a year for it.
What's, what's first on it?
Uh, the, uh, expiration of, uh, patio homes of Crestwood. We could ask you all, you folks, to step out of the room so we got, so we can finish up before Fiscal Court gets here, so, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Albi, if you would, let's do the extension of expiration on patio homes of Crestwood.
That the first one? Okay. Well, this is just informational, um, because this is going to kind of lean up to your next item there. Um, the, it's, uh, we had an extension request for the, um, patio homes of Crestwood, that's on Highway 22 past Dairy Queen going in towards Jefferson County on the right. Um, we sent all of it out as our policy states to the agencies, there were no issues that came back, so their new expiration, uh, is set to go for December 31st of 2018. As the extension of expiration policy states, that's reviewed and approved at staff level, um, unless there's an issue from one of the outstanding agencies or serving agencies. So, this is basically just to put it into the record that staff did extend the expiration date till December 31st of 2018 for the patio homes of Crestwood.
So, we, we need, we don't need a motion?
No, yeah, no action.
Okay.
So, that leads to the, the next item.
Can I ask a question on that before you go to the-
Sure.
Where exactly are those patio homes?
If you go on 22 past Dairy Queen before you get to Williams Gate subdivision on the right, that always says, we need filter, that location.
Okay, I know where it is.
I did the same thing, I wasn't sure where that was at. So, um, and then, back in 2014, is that right? 2013, we approved an extension of time, uh, every two years, the Planning Commission reviews the extension of expiration policy to see if it's working, if there's any issues, and staff will bring that policy back before the commission to see, um, if you want to extend it another two years. So, that's where we're at today. Nothing's changed, no, no language has changed since the original adoption, it's just, um, whether the, the commission still wants staff to review and send the information out to agencies, um, at a staff level, rather than bringing those back to the commission each time.
Everybody okay with what's been, the way it's been working? Okay, let's, I'm sorry, Mr. Horton?
Yes, sir.
I just thought I'd ask, is it working in our exception?
Yeah. We've not had any, we've not had any problems, I had, um, we've done one, two, three, four, five, six, we've had six, um, between, in 2004, or 2015 and 2016, um, and all of those have come back with, with no issues. Um, as it states in the policy, if there is any outstanding issue from the serving utility agencies, they're required to come back to the, the Planning Commission. So, so far, so good, we've not had any issues, and it's a lot smoother process, I think.
Let's get a, let's get a motion on the floor, and then I'll open it back up, but, yeah, if we could get a motion for two years, extension of the existing policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have a motion?
Motion to extend.
To extend for two years?
For two years.
Okay. Have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Now, any discussion? Okay, well, I think we can do this by voice vote.